Hello and welcome to the Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, meeting of the Air Planning Board. Twenty-second, did I say it right?
Now you didn't.
Twenty-second, twenty-second, sorry. The meeting, this meeting hearing of the Air Planning Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended determined if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with a particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom meeting ID number nine seven eight seven seven two eighty-two twenty, or by calling nine two nine two zero five six oh nine nine. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Danny Ruiz, Town Planner, at D R U I Z at air dot M A dot U S, or nine seven eight seven seven two eighty-two twenty, extension one forty-four, prior to the meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
I think I make a motion to amend the agenda, just to add one small item, which is a review of the town meeting warrant articles at the end of the meeting, under the administrative matters, just so the planning board can get a finer review of the...
Excellent. Is that acceptable to people who made the motion in the second?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Ken?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. First item is our continued public hearing for Zero High Street, thirty-eight Grotton Harvard Road, Lincoln Hills. What I'd like to do is turn it over to Daniel Ruiz, Town Planner, to give us an overview of what we'll be discussing this week.
Okay. So, on the agenda, just so that everyone knows, I will, when the project is going to be on, I'll make sure to add the notes as to what the topics are going to be, so that everyone knows exactly when they're coming in, what the topics we're going to be discussing, so that if they have any questions about those specific topics, they'll be able to just ask those questions at this meeting. So, the first thing we're gonna, the first thing I have is yield plan discussion, since at the last meeting, we did not vote. We were waiting on the stormwater narrative, which was submitted to myself. I did review it. Matt did, Matt got that as well. The board has it in their packets, and...
It was also emailed to everyone as well.
So, we'll discuss that. Open space requirement, we'll discuss the open space requirement. It's shown on the newest plan that was just submitted, but we're just gonna discuss about the percentages on the fifty percent, making sure that they meet that requirement. Then, we can have a, an initial discussion on the density bonuses. This was, this request was submitted to us, the special apartment application was submitted. It'll be opened on May twenty-seventh, so we'll, you know, run the legal notice and send out the abutters notifications as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, Danny, I didn't mean to cut you off, but just to further explain. So, tonight, we won't have an in-depth discussion of the density bonuses, but because we're required by law to have an open public hearing just for the special permits, so this is just a very brief, just introduction to say, yes, we got the materials, very brief, but the real discussion can't happen until there's the open public hearing for the special permits.
Yeah, no deliberation will occur.
No deliberation.
There will be, I mean, some initial conversations that the applicant's, that has questions for you, but, yeah, the substance will be discussed at the May twenty-seventh meeting. Then, the next thing will be the update on the stormwater RFP. That was submitted to everyone, I mean, that was given to every, to the board members. It's also, I have it, I'll be putting up on the board, so that we can kind of go through it. Matt is the one who gave me the, the points that he felt would need to be reviewed.
And Matt, of course, would be our town engineer.
Yes, Matt, the town engineer. So, I put the RFP together. This was sent out to Green International, since they're already doing the traffic, but it'll, once I get their proposal back, we can, we'll be able to discuss it. But, just so that we can kind of go through that, so we can discuss what is being reviewed.
Good.
And then, the traffic peer review, we can give an update on where they are with that as well.
Excellent.
So, I'd say the first one would be, let's talk about the yield plan. So, at the last meeting, we had gone through the yield plan, determined that we were at the point where we felt we could vote. We chose not to vote because the narrative was not submitted. So, the submitting, the narrative was submitted, and I hope everyone had a chance to review it. It does meet the requirement based on the bylaw of what it states, what it asks for. So, I feel at this point, we are, the board is capable of voting for that.
Okay. Good, because my understanding was that the last meeting, we came to a consensus that thirty-four was the correct, mathematically, the correct number to arrive at. But, there was that suspended issue of the necessity of submitting the narrative, which is now here. So, I, board members, any further questions or discussion before we arrive at a vote on the base count?
Through the chair. So, Danny, the letter, I'm not sure if this is my fault or not, but it refers to the requirement thirteen. It says, the letter is in accordance with requirement twelve, but I guess you could say it's in requirements, and it complies with all of them, one to thirteen, but...
Yeah, it's, it's for requirement number twelve, is what it's actually for.
Yeah, right, but...
Yeah. I mean, it, it's a, that's a simple clarifier.
We'll just take it to be consistent with the requirement.
Yes.
Thank you.
And just to clarify anything that could be a source of confusion. This narrative is a simple, one-paragraph document, just giving a general overview of the intent of the applicant. It is by no means the actual stormwater submission, which will be about that thick, you know, so...
And it is up on the website.
And it is on the website.
It's a hundred and fifty-four pages.
Oh, I'm sorry, the yield plan, I'm sorry, yes. So, but, a lot of discussion in here refers to the water, so that's why I bring that up. So, don't, this is not the stormwater plan and this yield plan at whatsoever.
This is just a quick description.
A man.
I never do that, I'm sorry. Jonathan?
Yes.
I'm hearing we might be having Zoom troubles.
Oh, we are?
And I'm also noticing that we're usually fairly popular, not as popular tonight, but there's no one on Zoom. So, could we take one minute? I know we're not gonna spend the meeting fixing it, but we only have us...
We're gonna take just one minute.
Yeah, remember, the Zoom is, is, is not, we won't stop because of the Zoom.
I appreciate that, I just didn't know it was a quick one.
If there's a quick fix...
There's no quick fix.
Okay.
What, are they just saying that they just can't get in?
Yes.
What's gonna happen here is if there's an easy way of doing this, we'll do it. If not, we're just gonna continue, we'll continue with the meeting. But, if we can get it within a few moments, at least try.
The other evening, Zoom was out?
Altogether?
Yeah.
For four and a half hours. It was the most blissful night of no meetings I've had in a long time.
Oh, there we go.
There we go.
I don't know why that was.
Oh, people coming in?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie, for letting us know.
Not sure what that was, but...
You're wrong.
I just ended it and restarted it, and it seems to...
Okay, they're all flooding in.
Oh, yeah, there we go.
Hey.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I think at this point, I'm prepared to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that the board, the board accept the yield plan base count calculation of thirty-four. Lots of units.
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 So, we have a, you have a motion for it, we're gonna get a chance to discuss it?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Now, we have discussion.
I just wanna go over how we got there with the design that they submitted. Can we pull that up, please? And so, everyone knows, to have to submit a subdivision plan, that's the basis we start from. I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
No, let's do it.
I do want, I do wanna get out of here tonight, but I think that might be helpful.
I don't wanna get out of here tonight.
And we are gonna make this, we did this thoroughly at the previous meeting, so this will be a brief recap.
I just wanna recap it. I mean, my, my sets of plans at home, I have notes all over them, so...
Let me just change the view on this in a second.
If you could pull up one that has the, excuse me... Not the contours? Not the contours, but we need the one that has the lot sizes on it.
Yep.
That'll allow us to say, yes, it can be a duplex, no, it's not a duplex. Yes. Fair enough?
Yep. Let me just, yep, this is it. Nope, that's not what I wanted to do.
It can be that shaped.
I don't know why it's not letting me rotate.
Why?
P A, maybe, maybe? There we go.
Okay.
There it is.
So, just to recap, if you don't mind, please do. I believe there's a total of twenty-six lots. And if you count around in the circles, you get to twenty-six. The minimum square footage for a duplex lot is twenty-four thousand square feet. Square feet. If I, I'm gonna do this off the top of my head, I know lot four, lot three, lot two... Lot nineteen. Lot nineteen, I can't read eighteen, I believe eighteen, and twenty, and seventeen.
Yep.
Am I missing any at all?
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen.
Number eight. Thank you. Thank you. So, that's six lots. Am I correct, Mr. Diskin? Yeah, you've got it printed in front of you. That's eight lots. So, those would be, eight lots would allow two per lot, which gives us eighteen units.
Correct.
So, we take twenty-six, we subtract eight, that's eighteen. And what's the numbers add up to? So, it's eighteen singles and eight duplexes for a total of thirty-four units. Okay.
Okay, good.
Are we all on the same page?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, but that's like, let's start with everyone agreeing somewhere. I appreciate taking the time, Mr. Chair, thank you.
You got it. Any other points for discussion?
Never mind.
Hearing none? Ken?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff? Chair votes aye. So, we have a base yield count of thirty-four, and then, there'll be subsequent discussions. That's what we talked about, the, the public hearing for the density bonuses, about what other additional units may be applicable.
That's correct. I probably had this question for, and we have buildings signed off on this being an acceptable plan. Yes. This plan meets all of our subdivision regs. Yes. I'm just saying that out loud, because it's just, I want it all in a package, guys. Yeah, so I'm the, I reviewed it, Charlie reviewed it as well. And we both came to that determination separate, stuff like that. Yeah, separately. Radii and all that are fine, so, thank you.
I think the next item is the open space requirement?
Yes.
So...
I'm glad you know what this means, Danny. See, it's nice to have a laptop that actually connects to our, our... Driver now? My last one did not. I just gotta get down to, I think it's page... Give it the minute it needs to load.
Julie, how many people on Zoom?
That's the one, no, that's not the one.
Five.
Thank you.
Mostly ten or four. Finally, Ian, man.
Nope, that is not the one. Maybe it's on a different page.
Ian, do you know what page the open space calculation is on?
No, no.
No, there's a specific page. Oh, I found it, I found it. Thank you, yeah. Yeah. So, it's, it's on, this is the updated one, right here, on page twelve, sheet twelve. If you wanna go to that on your plans.
I don't have that. Oh, you don't have it?
Yeah, so, here is, I know it's difficult to read. This is the open space area equals two hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred and eighty-seven square feet, and the building develop, development area is two hundred and forty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-three. The infiltration area is removed, that's fourteen thousand and twenty-nine square feet. So... Excuse me, when you say it's removed? From the calculation? From this, from this open space count. So, the two sixty-three and five eighty-seven does not include the fourteen oh twenty-nine? Correct. Thank you.
No, or...
Does not. Does not.
It doesn't.
Maybe I can explain how I...
Because you put that up a little bit.
Okay, I gotta do this, if I can see this on here. But, the, the way I did this, and it actually is, is very complicated. So, I thought the simplest way to do it was first to give the total square footage.
Let me zoom into that, you're talking about the chart at the bottom.
That chart, right. If you pull up that chart, so that I can read it, then I can explain it. Make it a lot easier. Okay, if you look at the total square footage there. Yep. Right there, you'll see area, that's the total area of the entire property. Yep. You take the steep slopes, that's calculated, and all the numbers are actually on the plan, how I came up with that number. And the difference is what's not steep slopes. Then, you look at fifty percent, now we divide, divide everything by half. Then, okay, then look at the developed lot and see what the areas are. Then, take the difference between the fifty percent and the developed lot, and all the numbers in the developed lot are smaller than the fifty percent. And those numbers are all larger than what the infiltration basin is. And I think that makes it fairly clear that we meet the requirements, both in steep slopes, as well as that we are compensating for the infiltration basin area. The closest, like, steep slopes, I mean, if you look at, there's a hundred and ten square feet extra in steep slopes. That is, we, we are a hundred and ten square feet higher in steep slopes than, than we need be. I mean, and, and also, non-step slopes, we still thirteen thousand nine hundred and nineteen square feet. So, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot of extra space there.
And so, as part of our guidelines, it does require that the calculations of steep slopes take into account, and that, you know, you, it goes, it gets, there's, so in the guidelines, it gets pretty specific on the, on the steep slopes and the open space, what can and cannot be counted towards it. So, I think initially, based on these numbers, it shows that it does comply. There is a question still, right now, that I, that I still have out to town council right now, that I'm waiting for an answer on, I still have not received back yet. There is a right-of-way shown right along here.
It's a little longer than that.
Yeah. So, there's a right-of-way that's shown along there. We're still trying to figure out whether or not that can be counted towards open space. Technically, so, I'm still trying to figure out who's own, who's, who has ownership, who does not have ownership, what rights, what, what, who doesn't have rights. But, based off of right now, there is a right-of-way that went with this, this, this lot right here. I've done all the research, going back through the deed, the registry of deeds. It's now in town council's hands to determine what's going on there. That's, as of right now, that's the, the only question I have left, before we make a final determination on open space.
Excuse me. Do we, are you, Danny, anticipating that we make, arrive at a finding and decision, not tonight?
No, 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 no. This is just a discussion.
And I just wanna say, as part of discussion, if we find through further deliberations that there are issues in the developed area and in the open space, for instance, with things that need to be constructed in the open space in order to fulfill the stormwater, or on the opposite side, developed area, you realize, oh, you know what? We need additional space for, say, snow storage or something else. That would necessitate that we may need to revisit the calculation for the open space itself, right?
Yes, yes, so...
We just wanna make that public, to be aware that that could, that's a possibility.
Yeah, so, we won't be making any determination on the open space until, I think, at the end of the project.
Right, because we can't.
Correct. So, the initial, this plan right here, to me, meets, meets the requirement, but, that is based on my review on the bylaw and what's before me. It may change depending on how the board and other, you know, all the board members, and maybe other comments that may come from other department heads, may have, it may fluctuate, and it, it's, it could be an ever-changing kind of number. Where the line may change here and there. So, that's why I think we won't be able to make that final determination until the end of the project, but initially, right now, they, I feel, I feel like they meet the, they comply with that.
In other words, and I'll get to you once...
Uh, thank you.
In other words, as the plan stands today, conceptually, there is, there is the, they have met the requirement for the fifty percent. I mean, obviously, with all the caveats we just mentioned, but it gives us enough, we can move forward in deliberations on other aspects of the plan.
That is, that, yeah.
Beautiful.
And, and at this point, just to, again, put it in an envelope, Mr. Chair, we have a question about whether or not the right-of-way space can be used as open space. And we have a question, because we don't yet know what the stormwater, the end, like, the end stormwater needs are gonna be, and what will need to be constructed in this space to meet the stormwater needs. So, there's two open questions that will impact this discussion at a later date.
I'm gonna first open to the board members for discussion, then I will turn to the public, first this room, and then Zoom. What's that?
I think Janet did wanna also speak on it.
Okay. So, I will, I will address Nathan first, and then, who is it? Janet?
Yes, the applicant.
And then, and Jessica Gina. First board, yeah, board first, so Nathan had raised his hand, so I'm gonna acknowledge Nathan. Go ahead.
Sorry, Ken.
Did I miss you? Sorry. Go ahead, Nate.
Could you bring the table up again, Danny? Just, so I understand, to the applicant, the in, the number there is a net? Or, we're saying that, let's take, for example, the difference, the last column there, we're talking just over two hundred, three hundred square feet, is the difference between the infill basin and the spaces left over? Is that, is that a correct understanding?
No, no. Fifty percent less the developed lot is, okay. The developed lot is smaller than the fifty percent, and the amount that it is smaller is the difference.
Is fourteen to thirty-four.
And the infiltration basin is less than any of those numbers that are given there.
Yes. Yes.
So, the infiltration basin is use, it could use up to that amount.
Correct. This amount.
Up to that amount, yeah, so it could use...
But, the amount that it's using, it tells you what it is using.
Yeah. And the closest case is the last...
Third one.
Yes, third one.
So, so, which means we could add, like, a hundred square feet to the infiltration basin.
Three hundred. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, what is it? Oh, yeah, two hundred, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's not a lot.
It's not a lot.
Three hundred square feet is, is like half this room.
No, it's close. But, let me, let me say this, if, if you show the whole plan there, in fact, if you show the whole plan, the, the, okay, that plan's fine, but there are, there's additional places where we could cut off property that's not being used in the developed lot.
Okay.
Yeah. So...
Yeah, that's good to know, because I, I just wanted to bring up, there's three points to make. One is, we've had some experience previously, where we, we make, we approve something, and either field changes or other reasons, there's, there's post-approval changes.
Right.
And, and I just wanna state that there's, in this plan, there's little margin, which would require careful construction. And I'll just employ the applicant to be careful in construction, if this goes forward.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with what you're saying, and also, looking at that slope plan, I mean, I did that right up front. It's done to the closest square foot, so, everything is done very accurately. Even though the requirement, it's, it's not that clear in the bylaws whether one needs to be that accurate.
Yeah.
But, it's done to the square foot, so...
Yeah, I, I'm, yeah, I won't go into my, my past. So, the second is, is there a right-of-way to the infiltration basin that needs to be maintained for operation and maintenance?
There's no, there's, there, there is a right-of-way where the drains go, and that would be the only way that they can get there.
There is an existing old driveway that comes...
That kinda falls down here, that could be used.
But, would that have to be maintained? But, we're gonna, but, we're gonna have to, this will be something that we're gonna have to discuss. As part of the stormwater aspect, it's going to be something that Matt, Matt and myself have, have had questions on.
Exactly.
So, there's possibility, there could be, what do we call it? Infrastructure associated with the infiltration basin that is not proper to the infiltration.
Okay. On that subject, the way it's written in the bylaws, it says infiltration and detention basins and similar infrastructure.
Doesn't say that, it says related infrastructure.
Okay, if you can quote it exactly, I mean...
Similar, it's different from related.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, I...
Could be something similar.
I'm just saying, I mean, just make sure you have margin, because...
Right, but, but I think if, if we're saying similar infrastructure to detention infiltration basin, my interpretation of that is, is that if you're digging out the ground for a basin, then it applies. If you're not digging out the ground and you're not changing the topography, then it does not apply. But, that's my interpretation. That's how I read it.
So, if it comes up, as we get into stormwater and access, if there needs to be a gravel road...
I knew that issue would come up, and I, and I think it's something that we, we should resolve, because...
Agreed.
Because there, there's, there's a lot of more done than just digging a hole in the ground there. And, and, and then, it's a whole different ballgame, if, if they're not, but the way I interpreted it was that it, it compares it to infiltration or detention basin, and that is digging a hole in the ground. Changing the topography.
And then, my last...
I have to...
Just, unless you wanna jump on this topic.
Gathering information.
The park, there's gonna be a, a pocket park, or a proposed pocket park down on Grotton Harvard Road, down here, yes. It's a, it's a public asset. Is, is it, is it defined as open space?
Yeah, so, that's part of the open space.
Okay. I mean, a public, a park is open space.
Yeah. Yep.
I think that's almost the purpose of the open space, is for public access.
Ken, did you have a question to comment before I touch the public?
Yeah, so, first of all, we haven't decided that we're, that we're gonna get a park down there yet, or that we wanna park down there.
But, if there is one, it is defined as open space.
So, let's, to the applicant, Ian, there's definitely gonna be an issue here in my mind as to what this means for the related infrastructure. And in particular, in the change drawing, you're not showing the subsurface basins over the, the cul-de-sac basins. Before, you, you showed the, just a situation where it's drainage. So, now, you are digging a second infrastructure type of drainage, stormwater drainage. So, the way I read this is the, this is from the rules, regulations, not directly from the bylaw, but it applies the same, which is from our open space residential development regulations and design guidelines. Location of stormwater management basin and facilities is the word at the end. Stormwater basins, in parentheses, detention and retention basins and related infrastructure cannot be located in the open space that are needed to count towards the fifty percent required open space per the O S I D, and so forth and so on. Stormwater basins and related infrastructure can be cited in extra open space, meaning extra, you'd give it to us somewhere else, I guess, provided the extra open space was not used to earn the density bonuses and so on. So, the way I read this, which may be controversial, is that the piping in the second, where the cul-de-sac structures are down by Grotton Harvard Road now, that's all related infrastructure. So, you're gonna go in there, and I think you just used the word dig up. So, you're gonna dig trenches, you're gonna install catch basins, you're, excuse me, you're gonna score manholes on the pipeline for the stormwater. You're gonna disturb the whole area, and your contention, I think, is you're gonna put it back together at the end and overseed it and whatnot. So, this is a point of contention, I believe, at least we should be looking at the amount of land that's where the cul-de-sac systems are, again, and deduct that, because I believe that is definitely related infrastructure to the, the rest of the project. You might make a case for the pipelines, if you're gonna put them back together again, I guess, and resurface it and whatnot. Even if you turn it into a park, it still has to be maintained, there'll be a, a place for maintenance, the whole works. So, I think there's a definite situation that we have to talk about. The other thing I'm interested in, in the open space... Um, the other thing I'm interested in, in the open spaces, and I'm not sure if we have to go back now to conservation for another analysis because of the strips of land that you've cut out. So these strips are typically not what we're looking for, we're looking for contiguous open space.
It is contiguous.
I, I know, but contiguous to the major piece, I think this is kind of winding around, I'm not sure of the value.
Can I just?
The other question I have is, the other question is, if you in fact disturb this with grading lines, this whole area showed retaining walls before in the first print, now it shows this grading. So shouldn't we be considering this part of the digging and whatnot, disturbing the open space? And, you know, my opinion on open space is that it should remain un, as much as possible undisturbed. So in essence, the open space is basically creating a way for you to build the buildings by excavating, grading, whatever you gotta do to damage it, and, uh, I think.
That could be alleviated with just a retaining wall.
Well, I have to, name, address, I have to acknowledge you first before you can speak.
That's part of my concern. Um, the last part of my concern is, I think it's gonna be very blatantly obvious that the caseras right-of-way is not gonna be used in the open space, but I'll wait for Danny's answer from the, because I can't see how you can put a conservation restriction on top of a right-of-way and bound it with, you know, markers and everything else, when they have the right to use it under their deed.
I was asked to ask for town council's opinion, I am not a legal person. So I can't make that interpretation.
Go to town council.
Well, but, Ken, you're not a legal.
I'm just giving you my opinion, so that's my opinion.
Well, you just said, I don't think we needed to go there, that's.
So, just telling you that.
But your opinion is not based on law, on, on your expertise.
Okay, all right, so anyway, um, I think we have a, I think we have a situation here, we have to look closely at the disturbance that's caused within the easements, if you wanna call them that, because they're gonna become easements, I believe, at the end of the day, the utility easements. And on the A and R plan that you submitted with the drawings, that's how they are labeled on the A and R plan. These are, so, my last question is on the open space, and this is not questioning your, you know, uh, capacities as a civil engineer, but you turned in an A and R plan, it's stamped by another engineer. Did they do this calculation for you as well? They did the calculation on the first open space, I believe, right?
But that, that.
Plan of land?
That's just where the property lines are, or that's all that that does, and puts the easement on, on the A and R.
Yeah, the plan of land has nothing to, that's gonna get updated, that, that, don't ignore that.
My question was, did the other, did you do this fifty percent calculation, or did the surveyor do the fifty percent calculation?
On a surveyed plan.
Okay.
Yes.
Can I just, one thing about this contiguous, this right here, this is allowed, you guys have.
Done it on another project. Can, can I, can I make a comment on that, what you've just said?
Yep.
There is a requirement of.
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet, and that is a thirty-foot stroke.
But that thirty-foot is only between units, if you're gonna provide open space between units.
Right.
So, this was allowed on Shaker Mill Pond, um, this was allowed on Curly Circle.
Okay, just bringing it up.
I just, I know, and I, but that's why I wanna make sure, like, this is something that was allowed.
I think the important thing on the open space calculation is. I need to be, the easement.
Yep.
And excavation that occurs within the easement.
Well.
Whether it's related infrastructure to the detention and retention basins, and then we have to decide.
The easement does not count.
No, no, I'm saying, on the A and R plan, they call it a utility easement, it's, it's defined on the plan.
Yeah.
So, we have to decide whether, the work, I guess it doesn't matter if you call it an easement or not an easement. We need to decide, I guess, in that, if that disturbed area is part of the related infrastructure.
Okay, I wasn't sure if you meant the whole easement, cuz that, that wouldn't be counted towards, uh, but it wouldn't be removed.
What do you mean by the whole easement?
The actual thirty-foot wide strip of the easement.
Are you talking about?
The line, the lines that are shown.
These, these lines?
Yeah.
Yeah, so my indication is, it, it could be considered the entire process, yes, not just.
The way I, we've had a conversation about this, I'm, yeah, I just wanna make sure.
What, what I'm, what I'm asking to get clarified by the board, I guess, is the new layout where we show the cul-de-sac infiltration systems, which I think is definitely related, and whether we have to consider the rest of the construction that happens through, throughout the.
The construction, not the, the lines on the paper?
No, not the lines on the paper.
Okay, that, that's my clarification, that's what I needed to know.
In other words, it's related infrastructure.
Feet of twenty-four inch pipe going in.
Excuse me, hundreds of feet.
Hundreds of feet of twenty-four inch pipe going in.
And it's the same.
Going in ten, twelve feet deep.
There, there are also water lines in there, sewer lines in.
It's completely disturbed.
Can I, can I just make a comment on that? The, the, as I said, in my interpretation, is, it's a matter of changing the grade or not changing the grade. Because when, when they compare it to infiltration basin or a detention basin and similar infrastructure.
Related.
Or, or, or related, uh, related infrastructure, okay, um, related infrastructure.
Related to the project, it's not similar. Yes, it's a struggle.
But it says stormwater basins.
Yeah, but it's, it's the and, stormwater basins, in parentheses, detention and retention basins, closed print, and related infrastructure cannot be located in the open space and so on and so forth.
So are you saying that, um.
I'm saying the, the work.
The thing at the bottom?
Yes, for sure, cuz it's definitely related infrastructure, and I'm contending that the balance of the work to get, it's a follow-up to Nathan's kind of concept, that you need to have related infrastructure to get to the basin, maintain the basin, and to build the whole system. The system is constructed, you know, entirely in the open space.
And if I'm reading the plans correctly, if I may, Mr. Diskin, I think I count eight, um.
Manholes. They didn't, made, made manholes, which is a potential maintenance issue, so.
Well, they're there for maintenance.
You, you, when you said, uh, changing the grade, is that what you just mentioned?
Yeah.
Those, there's some tremendous drop manholes there, on that grade.
But doesn't change the grade.
Yeah, so you're containing that you can put them in at the grade that's there, and but what about the excavation for the depth of the pipe that's gonna go through there?
Well, there's also sewer pipe, water line.
Exactly, the whole thing.
And that is for the benefit of the town, and we're doing it, um, to meet town requirements.
There'd be no lines there if there wasn't a development, so that's kind of a crazy argument that you just said, I don't know where you come up with that. Development needs the sewer and water and.
Yeah, okay.
So, I'm just putting it out there for thought, that I think this is disputed or something to figure out, that, that, that's different. We haven't had this happen before, so if we go back to other projects, we talked about other projects, what we've done, what we haven't done. Interestingly enough, we've never had a project where the water and sewer went through the open space. They've ended prior to the open space, retention systems have been in open spaces, because typically you're running it down just off the, just off the developed area, this is very different. So, the disturbance that's gonna be done, I believe, is, is related infrastructure, and that's my point. So, we have to, I think you need to be forewarned that, we need to think about this, but at a minimum, the, uh, where the area of the cul-de-sac systems are, I think definitely would be the same as almost a retention.
Okay, and, and, and there's one other issue here.
Yep, well, there's probably more, but this is.
Yeah, that, so I just wanna make sure. I think we're getting a little ahead, cuz this is gonna be part of the discussion that we're gonna have to have at a later date.
So, well, I'm just trying to think, wait, if he has to make an adjustment to think about this, it might be a good time for him.
Yeah.
Right, I, I think another factor that should be brought in is the fact that, that house, that existing house is being taken down, it would have been part of the open space, and the.
The house where the cul-de-sacs are going, I believe, is where he's speaking.
The cul-de-sac chamber is going.
A large portion of the footprint of the house is the cul-de-sac chamber.
But that happens to be where they did the testing.
I understand, Ken, I, I'm just translating.
I, I, I think the relevant thing here is, I wanna turn to the town planner. What's the path to resolution of this issue about whether or not that infrastructure can be conducted through the open space without compromising the.
How do we get to that answer?
Um, I think I'm gonna have to talk to Charlie, the building commissioner, on that.
And, and if necessary, a waiver can be granted.
Yeah.
I always phrase it, a waiver can be asked for.
A waiver can be, well.
Can be requested.
So.
You can grant that waiver.
Yes, our, our guidelines do allow for waivers.
Right. Um, I know people in the public have been waiting patiently, I'm sorry, I, I, I didn't, I'm sorry, Jeff, I didn't mean to.
I, I can ask later. I'm gonna go around the board again, I might have to go around the board.
No, I think you should go first.
To, to later, so, um, so one of the problems, difficulties I had with working with this was trying to ascertain e- even as a percentage, the amount of square area that was gonna be disturbed in the construction or left over. It's just hard to know, it would be helpful to have those, those numbers in the calculation also. I think they're germane to the, in my mind, um, it's very important to understand what is and isn't disturbed, is appropriate in the open space, also in my mind, cuz I'm the guy who thinks in numbers, it's helpful to have the square area and the numbers of the, um, of what's gonna be here. And I appreciate, yes, a twenty-four inch piece of pipe that's very ten feet deep, might just be too deep wide, but there is an easement that's gonna be, uh, needed above it, we've got handfuls of manhole covers, so there's going to be some disturbance, so that will remain afterwards. So, it would help me to understand in square footage what that impact is, and I couldn't find it on the plans. That just maybe, I couldn't find it, so it may be there, but thank you.
Julie?
Sorry, it's another technical issue, in order for me to be able to stay present in this meeting, I'm just gonna update everyone, and then I'm gonna, my priority is for me to follow this meeting.
Yes.
In giving us a ten-minute warning that Zoom is timing out and we are not on Zoom Pro. So I just wanna make a statement to the people on Zoom, I'm gonna disconnect, and I will reconnect, and you can all rejoin if it works. Um, if it doesn't, again, my priority is to be a voting member of this board.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience, Julie, I'm sorry about that.
End meeting for all.
I, I had a question, I think it's extremely related to Jeff's, um, which I was gonna go in reference to the square footage that was on the screen, so, um, but I, I can kind of proceed. So, I just wanted to confirm, because we weren't given, like, a square footage on open space. So the way I calculated open space was I took the total square footage of the property that was in the box, I subtracted the square, not square footage or, or what have you, the area for the developed lot, and then I subtracted the area for the infiltration basin, and I came up with a number.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Come up with what? It got beeped when you were talking, so we couldn't hear what you said.
Um, uh, it's, so, so I, I took total, cuz, cuz we didn't have, like, a, a number per se for open space, so. I took total, and then I subtracted the area for the developed lot, and then I subtracted the area for the infiltration basin, and that gave me about two hundred sixty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-three, um, as a percentage of the total area, that's fifty-one point two five.
So the number that we have here, shown up here, is two sixty-three, five eighty-seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess I'm, I'm backing up Jeff's request to say I would like to see these numbers, but also, in the absence of these numbers, is my math correct?
It is, and the difference is, if I may, Danny, the dark hatched areas are steep slope.
Right, I didn't use.
There's no way to figure that out without, exactly, so, like I said, your logic is impeccable, you just didn't have all the numbers.
Okay.
Yeah, no, absolutely, that's exactly the process I went through.
Okay.
Janet?
Just for a second.
Isn't the sleep, the steep slope exercise simply to show that the open space and the developed area basically have about the same amount of steep slope? That you can't put more steep slope in the open space than you've got in the developed area.
Yeah, it's supposed to be.
I disagree with that.
Okay.
I think you can put as much steep slope as you want to in the open space, as long as.
Imagine.
As, as long as, um.
Compensate.
If, if, you could, you could, you could add enough steep slope, and you'd still be less, you, you'll still be fifty percent. You can't be more than fifty percent, um, on, on, on ones, on, on, on steep on, on the open space than you can on your land. Now, if you put more on there, then you gotta make sure that if you, if you, what you have for steep slopes in open space, if you added that steep slope back, you weren't more than fifty percent overall. So the way I worked it out was make sure that with the fifty percent, and, and, uh, the infiltration basin, there was still a balance of area.
In the open space.
Right, in the, in, yeah.
Yeah, I need to move this meeting along.
Thank you.
So let me get a couple comments, is it, Janet, did you wanna make a comment?
I think, um, just, I wanted to talk about that strip of land, oops, sorry. Can I show on here?
Just identify yourself, uh, for the, for everybody.
Yeah, I feel that, a developer, one of the developers. Um, I actually talked to my attorney about this strip of land quite some time ago, just to try to understand how it would factor into all this. So, maybe she could get in touch with town council, that may, like, help them to.
Yeah.
Um, because what they had said to me is that, cuz at one point, we looked at, if, depending on what we were doing with all this land, did we wanna put a house down here somewhere and not, you know, build there? But this land is in fact owned by the Hudlands, or us, um, and there is a right-of-way on the deed to this property to pass and repass on it, so, yeah.
Okay.
Well, um, she, she had, like, the deeds, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I have, I have that information.
Good.
Yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, ownership, so the ownership, a- according to the research, um, the ownership is to that land, however, there is, is within their deed also, um.
The right to pass and pass, and to pass and repass. Yeah, so I just, that's the, I just need them to clarify.
Yes, put it in writing, like everything. Okay, sorry, that's all.
Thank you, Jess, and then I acknowledge the gentleman at the baseball cap, but Jess was been waiting first, and I'll turn to you, sir. You know, you know. Thank you.
Oh, okay, that's good, it won't be long. Uh, Jessica Gino, Eight Mountain View Avenue, um, I know there are a lot of different interpretations.
Que- question, are you speaking as a conservation agent or a resident?
Speaking as a resident with conservation interests. Put me in, but I'm not speaking for the commission, I am not speaking for the commission.
Are you speaking as a resident or as the, as a commission member?
A resident.
Thank you, that's all I needed to know.
So, my basic question is, uh, all the different interpretations, um, what was the intent of the meaning of open space when this bylaw was passed by the town? And I think that strongly should be considered, um, the easement with the driveway access.
This one.
From a common sense perspective, as a resident, who voted for that bylaw, would not, I would not consider that usable open space for residents. Um, I think Ken's point about, and Jeff's about, what is the area of disturbed land? Uh, my understanding when we voted on this bylaw was that the intent was to protect habitat, and disturbing the amount of land, just to put in the easement for the utilities, um, is problematic to me as a resident, so that's, that's all I really wanna say, but just consider, you know, there are a lot of different ways to interpret things. What did the residents of this town mean when they voted for an open space residential development? And it's, you know, and preserving, preserving the land, the woods, and the existing habitat, so.
Thank you, Jess.
Gentlemen, if you would step up, uh, name it after.
Yep, Jacob Cruzera, Dirty Grotten Harvard.
Welcome.
Um, so, that is my right-of-way, um, that we're talking about right there, and it is impervious developed land already. So I don't know how it could possibly be in open space, as it is a driveway that is impervious. It is a gravel driveway with, um, a coating of pavement underneath it and not across the front. So it's already a paved developed space, I don't know how it could be considered open space. Um, so I just wanna throw that out there first on that base, I, I don't even think it matters who has right to it, this and that. If it's developed, it can't be open space, I don't, I don't think. Um, and then, so, when I went through the math on the basin for what was in the, what's the name of this one, the development impact statement, gave initial numbers on the undeveloped space, and in that statement, which was the two hundred and sixty-three thousand, so not what's actually the open space, but just considered the undeveloped space. And in that document, they put the impact of the basin at seven point seven percent, which, that's out to about twenty thousand square feet, not fourteen thousand square feet, so I think you're dropping about six thousand.
Yeah, no, so this is the revised set of plans that are up on the website.
So, I'm literally looking at the plans that are on the website right now, and it says sixty-three, so, then they're not correct.
The impact statement he's looking at, I don't think it's been revised.
No, it hasn't been revised, but, yeah, that's, that's what I meant, yeah, so, that.
That document says that this is twenty thousand square feet, so somehow it's shrunk?
Yeah, they shrunk it, so they shrunk the size of the, the, the impact of the basin on the new plan, so they'll have to update all this. All the impact study will need to, well, hold on, let me cover you, the impact study is actually not even required for this project. They gave it to us. They gave it to us.
Right.
Okay.
Well, it's just the math doesn't map what's up there at all. And then, um, I think again with the open space, and this is my opinion, where they're taking down the house and putting in the basin up, up there, again, that's already gonna be developed impervious space. Like, I don't understand how that can be open space if it's developed impervious space. Because you still have the foundation you're ripping out and then putting in a basin. I would think open space could only be underdeveloped pervious space, not impervious.
Is that true? No. You can, so if it's developed and they were to rip it all out and put grass there, then it would be considered open space.
Okay, and then the, the one other math thing was, uh, for the entire storm, I know we're not in stormwater, but it relates to the open space, which is the only reason I'm sliding it in right now. Um, it's, all of this is actually in the notes that I submitted as a statement last week to you. Um, the, uh, entire stormwater infrastructure statement was at a, I think the number was 49% or 52, 50.2% forest. Um, I'd love to know the definition of forest there because the basin is then brought up as grass, but that's considered forest in the stormwater plant. And everything they're gonna tear out to put in infrastructure is considered forest in that statement plan instead of grass. And so I don't know what the definition from an engineering standpoint is of forest, but I think forest, I think trees, established root system when you're thinking stormwater, not torn out and then re-seeded, which will take decades to get back to the same level of something I would consider woods. So I just have a open space slash stormwater concern with that as well.
Well said, thank you. Um, I think we, we've, we've flogged this dog for the last 40 minutes and we have other things to, to get at. Um, what's the next step on the open space, just so we can move forward? I mean, we have some unresolved issues, but. No, I think we're, we've, um, discussed enough. Was just to make sure that, uh, based off this initial discussion, based on my review so far, it, it, you know, it meets it until we get answers to the other questions that I still have. Okay. But this is just so that the conversation. So there's some issues that remain unresolved and open because answering them really requires, uh, answering other things first. Is that, is that the correct way of thinking of it? Okay. Uh, density bonuses, what, what is there to be said this evening? Because remember, the actual deliberation cannot take place in that. Yeah, no, so, so that everyone knows, uh, so the open space density bonuses were submitted. Um, there's a description on the, all of the density bonuses, what they're requesting, what they, you know, what they need, what they want, um. Is it up on the web for people? It is up on the website as well. Okay, good. Um.
It's in the new, it's in the new.
Yep, it's under the second submission.
Beautiful.
Um, so all this information is up there. Um, we will be having a, a discussion on the May 27th meeting when we open that and add this into this, combine it with the current, um, application. Um, the board, uh, when this opens, the board will be getting a, a letter from the Affordable Housing Tr- um, Committee, Committee or Trust? Committee, I think it was Committee. Um, on a, uh, interpreted, uh, on a request that they had for, um, number two for the affordable housing under the OSRD. Um.
I believe that's from the committee.
Yeah, committee. Um, and just to clarify.
Yes, sir.
The inclusionary housing that is, uh, this project is under is the one that was passed in October, which is the 10% requirement. Cause I know right now, I know there's been some confusion on whether it's 20%, whether it's 10, it's 10%.
Is that called the Massachusetts Inclusionary Zoning Law? No, it's, well.
Well, it's our, yeah, it's, it's ours too.
Yeah.
But yes, it's 10% um, cause we changed it in October.
That's right.
Um, I think.
So, just a quick note, the applicant is wherever that.
Of what?
That, what you just said.
The 10%, yes.
Okay.
Yep, the applicant has the bylaw. Um, the completely off, yeah, completely off topic. It, it's, it, the website should be getting updated or something. Good enough. Yes, Kathleen?
Can I ask a question of, are we allowed to request additional information as part of this? So in reading this document, it, uh, I, I think it would be nice if we had a, a bit more information. So a- at the end, it tells you that 54 units and the 20 bonus units, but it would be nice if under each section, um, it, it told us exactly how many units. Like, I think it would just make it easier for us.
Yeah, it's, it's right here. It's under the total requested bonuses. So 3.4, 8.5 and 8.5.
Okay, so it's not in line, cause like, i- i- at first, it started off in line and then it stopped being in line. So like, under open space, there was like nice math saying 34 times 10 is 3. And then that, that didn't happen, but I, I, I guess I'm just not reading the document.
Yeah, it's, it's, so the bonus, yeah, so it's like 3 point, i- i- yeah, it's 3.4, 8.5 and 8.5. 25% of the, so.
But there, the, that says 3, not 3.4.
Yep.
So there, it's, it's, well, well, what I'm saying is the total requested doesn't match what's in each subsection.
Mm-hmm.
So can you?
You can't get a half unit in the calculator.
Well, so.
I was gonna discuss that.
No, you said, no, that, the, the bylaw says it's.
Inclusionary. Yeah, half units, but I don't know what that is.
No, no, so the bylaw, the way it's, it says is you do the calculations and you add them all up at the end. That's how the bylaw reads.
Then you round it.
Then you round. You don't round after each of them, you add them all up, then you round.
So in effect, one more, but that's okay, yeah. And I agree with you, I.
But yes.
Right, I'm just saying like if under open space, it says 3.4 in one place and 3 in the other.
3 in the other one, yep.
So like if we could have consistent rolling.
I think she just, w- w- just looking at this, I think it just, they left off the four, the points there. I think they just forgot the four, but I can, that can be.
Well, cause it changes them.
Yeah, we can have them clarify that.
Okay.
Actually, it shouldn't change the math.
I mean.
The math, the math is based on.
But yes, but, but we'll have them, but just to make sure, numbers, I know.
It would seem to be 20.4, which rounds down to 20.
Correct. Yep, we can have them make sure that that's addressed when they come for the meeting. Is there anything else you want, um, you think?
Um, I don't have a clue, it's, it would, when I read the section about the affordable, affordable, affordable units, I don't know that it lines up with the, our actual language and that was just a questionable thing.
You mean?
You have the right people to say this.
You mean the OSRD or the?
The affordable community.
Yeah, 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 cause the, so the, and that's, that's the, that's what is gonna come to the board on the 27. There's gonna be a letter.
There's no reason to discuss it now.
Yep, correct.
The calculation they're using.
But the calculation that they're showing here is correct.
It's the old one, this one.
It's what's shown in our, in our OSRD bylaw.
Okay, they're using the OSRD, yeah.
I think that's as far as we can get with the density bonuses this evening. So could you bring up the stormwater RFP on the screen? Yes. So this is the stormwater RFP that, uh.
Request for proposal.
Yes, request for proposal. And so I put this together with the help, um, from Matt, our town engineer. He sent me the, um, scope of work that he felt was ne- needed to review, um, the stormwater, uh, report. And so as part of that, uh, the application review and plan review comments. Um.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about this.
Yeah, so I can, you want me to read it?
No, do it.
Okay.
You do it.
It's okay.
No, go ahead.
So I, I recognize.
Is there any way to expand that so it's even larger? Yes. Because there's, there, look, the sensitivity of the site and, uh, concerns of, of the Butters and others make it important to understand how deep this review is gonna go. So if you look under the, um, subhead that says application review and plan review comments, consider all the things that are involved in this. So they are, we're asking to review all the documentation provided by the applicant, including the plan set, the stormwater manager report and the stormwater calculations. And what they're gonna do with all that is to provide comments and recommendations to planning board, all these issues, adequacy and completeness of proposed stormwater system, accuracy and completeness of stormwater calculations, conformance with air's stormwater regulations, conformance with Massachusetts stormwater handbook, needed stormwater permits, potential stormwater impacts to downstream of Butters and recommended offsite st- stormwater improvements. That's just to say, it's exhaustive and it will be intense. Anything else that we should note about this proposal that, that you want to draw attention to, Danny? No, um, I, I, I will say, you know, typically the, we don't do a third-party review of stormwaters, but it is good to have it done. You know, sometimes, uh, having the peer reviewer has a little bit more, you know, sometimes they look at it from a different aspect and, and sometimes things can be caught. And so i- it's just good to have a third-party, just to, it's an extra set of eyes on this. And have you sent this out? It has been sent out. Any responses yet? Um, so, uh, the due date is the 30th, um, of April. Um, I sent it out to Green, cause I, cause they're already doing it, so we want, so we figured have them do both at the same time. Good. Questions from the board about the, about the stormwater RFP?
Um, yeah, this came to mind actually as I was looking at the plans the other day. Um, are the garages going to have storm drains in them?
Inside the grappits?
Yeah.
No.
No floor drains in the garages. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, traffic peer review update? Yes, so, uh, the traffic peer review, uh, the traffic, uh, Green International had, um, the traffic study and they started reviewing that.
What the hell?
Um, they started reviewing it Wednesday after our meeting. Um, once we signed off and sent everything over to them, we, uh, they started reviewing the traffic study. Then, um, last week, once I received the revised plan sets, I had told them that we were getting revised plan sets, so not to even bother looking at the first one yet. Um, the first, uh, plan set, we'll get them, so now they have the second set, the revised set of plans and the stormwater report, so they can actually base all of their review off of, um, all the information. Okay, great. Good. All right, first, any questions from the board first? Hearing none, yeah, come on up.
So Jacob, again, 30 Grundenharburg. Um.
Just remind, yeah, yeah, just your name so I can address you.
Jacob Cruzera.
Jacob, okay, Jacob, thank you.
Um, so the, uh, the proposed third water review for the stormwater, um, two quick things on there. One is, what I brought up before, like the, the woods versus grass, are they gonna do their own calculations on that? Or are they taking, like, the data that was already presented, even though I, I believe it to be inaccurate, um, to, to go there? So that's one of two things.
So the fir- on that, so the way typically they do it is they'll look at the, they'll look at their numbers and then they'll run the numbers again.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the, the difference is right that, like, there won't be that many woods, like, the forest will be cleared in that area for construction if they keep on running those numbers.
I'm not an, I'm not an engineer, I don't know if that makes a difference on stormwater, it may not, cause it's pervious versus, uh, in, it's typically just pervious.
Three versus impervious. They have three categories in their report, so I'm assuming that their report is there with the three categories because the three categories matter. And then the, the second thing is like the, um, where it's gonna be going from woods to grass is on a slope, which is going to then no longer have the sound structure of the root system to support the slope of, uh, soil, um, therefore changing the dimensions of it. And I feel like there needs to be a stormwater remediation for that area, not just the impervious above. And I'm wondering if in any way, shape or form, that can, that is factored into the third-party review, that they're actually changing the landscape and therefore that landscape needs to be protected from runoff and erosion.
Um, I got a quick comment for him. I can tell you one thing that in other projects, just to back up what's gonna happen in other projects, the, that the third-party peer reviewer has been very, very careful. And in each particular case, we've found that changes had to be made to make improvements. So I would say they're very qualified in what they're doing, okay? But it's just an interesting question that we do not actually have a landscape plan that shows.
We do. Oh, no, 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 we have a, we have a landscape plan showing the upper area.
Yeah, I put, yeah, I'm considering the lower area.
Yeah.
And you see his, uh, you understand his point. There should be, potentially be a detail of the top.
Do, do me a favor. Can you pull up the, the copy of, of that drawing, the colored-in drawing?
The colored one?
Uh, if you, you have the, the most recent colored-in one, right? When I.
Loading, one second.
Excuse me.
That essentially is how the calculations are done. The, the woods, which is the more bluish green, is considered woods. The lighter green is considered grass. So wherever there's change in grade, that is gonna be grass, which goes for the detention basin, around the detention basin and the open space by where the house is and so on. If you want to argue that where they dig up to put in the drains, that is not gonna be lawn, that is going to be woods. Because the trees there are still gonna be large enough to cover most of that area. It's never gonna be mowed, it's gonna overgrow, um, and it will not be like any of this other kind of lawn. The pool, the, the pond itself is gonna be mowed lawn, has to be mowed lawn. The, the area, that open space there is considered, um, lawn for, for playground or whatever. And, 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 and we could leave that up to, to peer review on that. But, but, and, and I think that is really splitting hairs. If you really want to split hairs, we can go on to talk about trees that have been put on this property that are not taken into account, that's on the landscape plan, where all the bushes are being put, um, where it's not lawn, where it is, it's, it's soil, it's, it's bushes and so on. You can go on and on and on, if you really want to start splitting hairs. But that is essentially how the calculations is done.
The third-party reviewer, when we met, meet with them, we can ra- we can raise it and see to them if they think it's going to make a difference in the calculation.
Yeah, that area is currently structurally un, it's barely hanging on. So you remove two or three trees, that dirt's gonna float, so. When you do a site visit, they look where those pipes are gonna be.
Go ahead, Bill. That gentleman with the glasses, could you, would you like to step up please? And I, I acknowledge you and you'll be next. And your name and address, sir?
Norman Buck, I'm at 58 Central Ave.
Oh my God.
His comment, I am literally directly south of there and that buffer strip, which is, you know.
It's right here.
We talked about the open space, yeah.
Right here.
Moving mouse. That going from trees to grass is going to change how it handles the storm runoff, the trees. You know, trees will block it more. I already have water coming down in the spring and snow melt there in a storms. So I'm concerned that he's talking about the storm run, man, runoff issues. Just wanna follow up on his, I'm going in that direction.
Mm-hmm.
And just given the nature of this construction, I can see that being torn up and replanted. And you're not gonna have the mature trees in there, so wanna look at maintaining that water.
That's. I'm just following up, I guess. Thank you, and, and I'm gonna make just a quick comment before I turn to the woman in navy blue shirt. Uh, I am not dismissive of Jacob's concerns. I actually am concerned and that will be part of my thinking when we get to that. Because once you cut and you actually start breaking root systems, behavior changes. We know that, so I'm not, so I would add that to the list of things that we're gonna have to be delete, uh, very careful to investigate in our deliberations and I am concerned about it. Thank you. I'm so, would you like to come up?
Uh, very briefly.
Yep, and name and address, please.
Sure, Julia Endo Bang, 34 Brundenharburg Road. Just for my own clarification, the lighter green, if I understood you correctly, the lighter green, which would be this area over to the right. Yep, so the light, light green, that's the park, that's the basin. Yep, so the light, light green, that's the park, that's the basin. The bluer green is the slope behind my house. And the forest and everything. So when you put in the basin to get to everything. That entire slope will not be trees anymore as well. So we're not just talking about up on the hill, we're talking about all around the hill.
Just this.
But that's what I'm, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
How are you going to get to that?
That's a question. That's a question that we have.
So, yeah, so, so I'm just not planning correctly. Good.
It is a concern.
An ongoing meeting, yes.
Yep, that is an issue, indeed. Okay. Anyone on Zoom that, uh?
No, I mean, they're there, but.
So, so I, I think to wrap this portion of it, traffic peer review is in process.
Yeah, so we should, we should have the, um, traffic back for the May twenty-seventh meeting.
Wow, big meeting.
Well, so, and this is where I want, one of the questions I wanted to discuss with the board was. The, so, the stormwater, I'm hoping will also be ready by then. Um, I'm hoping that Green will have something to me, um, this week on the RFP. Um, and then, um, we can kind of go out from there and get that going. Uh, and hopefully get that in time as well, cause there's also department heads are reviewing the plans, they're gonna provide comments. I have, I asked them to have them ready for us so that we can discuss them at the May twenty-seventh meeting as well. So what does the board want to do at the May twenty-seventh?
I think that's an excellent question because I can see that either the density bonuses or the stormwater occupying the full two hours.
And the traffic as well.
Traffic, so I think it wise that we pick one.
Yeah, so that's, and that's the big thing. So I think the density bonuses, I think that, we could do probably two topics, I think. I think we could do the, in my opinion would be, since we're opening the density bonus, would be, discuss that. There's not gonna be obviously no vote. I don't know why it keeps.
I know, I'm gonna work on that.
It's okay. So i- if it ends, then it ends.
Yep.
Um, we can discuss the density bonus. Well, there's not gonna be a vote at that point, obviously. It'll, it's gonna be a, you know, a discussion about. The information, what you guys need to make your determination, what's gonna be part of that determination. And then, I think. I think the traffic study could be the next topic because. The department head comments and the review of the stormwater, that could take three, four hours. If, if, depending on how.
Agreeing with you because here's the thing, I, I noticed from the last meeting and from letters that come in, people are concerned about, when do I show up for X issue? There's certain issues I'm concerned about. So I'd rather say to people, look, we're gonna do the density bonuses to get the full count. And we're gonna introduce the traffic, but to leave the stormwater out for the next meeting for two reasons. One, that people are really interested in that, many people are, don't feel that their time is wasted, but then they know there is a specific date in which we're gonna dedicate. A, a huge amount of time to that. Yes.
If I may ask a question, just so you understand. We get the stormwater review, I'm gonna play devil's advocate, changes need to be made. Construction has to happen, open space versus not open space will change. We have the ability to move things around. You can do things, we, you can do things based on what's happening. So that's gonna have, that may have some impact on the bonuses.
It could.
But at this point, that's three point four of the units, just so we're all thinking about it, okay? It's not twenty units. So just, understand that stormwater's gonna have an impact. But that's, you know, a- as we think about, as we, we're not gonna be able to give the actual bo- total bonus answer at the next meeting.
But I just wanna lay it out, guys.
That's correct.
To know where the road goes sometimes.
Well, I want.
So, thank you.
I would want to know where the road is.
Sorry to be so simple and clear, but I'm practicing for Monday night, okay?
Um, I think we're looking for continuance, right?
So let me, let's just make sure. So on the next meeting, we'll discuss traffic and density.
Okay, next.
Just so that everyone knows.
Traffic and density.
And this will be put on the, on the agenda when it's on there, uh, wh- when we, um, when we post the agenda. And so that everyone understands, we post it forty-eight hours before the meeting, not including weekends. So that, so I typically post it on Fridays, just so that everyone knows. Cause I know sometimes people reach out earlier in the week, I have not posted it, I post it forty-eight hours, that's our legal obligation. Um, just so that everyone knows.
Just before you go home, you can't get emails from us.
I'm joking, I'm joking.
Yes.
May I ask a very quick question?
Please.
The traffic study, does that include just the development area or will that include Groton Harbor Road?
So the, the study will include what they have, uh, studied, the studied areas. So Groton Harbor Road, there's, I don't believe there's any impacts be- it's not looked at because there's no road there. So I don't believe it, it includes Groton Harbor Road. But the traffic study will, um, the peer reviewer will determine whether they went wide enough or not.
You know why I'm asking, putting a park on Groton Harbor Road.
Uh, that, and that could be, yeah, that could be an impact. So it's, and that's something that we may need to, you know, revisit at a later date. But, yep.
Could we ask, could we make, could we ask the reviewer? I know typically when they do a traffic study, they have numbers of trips per unit. If we, if we had a pocket park down there, could they opine on what the number of trips would be for?
Yeah, oh yeah, they would, they, they would need to, yeah.
I think that's the piece you might be asking, Mr. Van.
Well, I'm just, I don't, I don't think a park, per se, belonged there at all.
Yeah.
Because of the speeding and nastiness that happens on that road.
Motion for continuance?
Move to continue zero High Street and thirty-eighth Groton Harvard Road, Little Kin Hills map, twenty-seven process twenty-eight, thirty, forty-one, sixty-two, seventy, one eighty-nine applications. Until May twenty-seventh.
Begging to.
Any further discussion? Yes, Nathan?
Um, I certainly appreciate having this application before us. And I just wanna underscore, as you opened last meeting, Mr. Chair. Particularly the, the diversity of housing that's being presented. It's, it's, it's a real opportunity and I'm glad, um, I'm glad to be able to review it. And, uh, I know that, uh, we will take a careful look at it, but it's, it's really, um, thoughtful. Proposal.
Alright. And how do you vote?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So we'll be, uh, continuing the public hearing for Lincoln, uh, the Lincoln Hill Pro- Hills Project, May twenty-seventh.
Before the next end, can we?
Let's see.
Just while the people leave, can we take two minutes while people?
Oh, yes, we'll take, uh, we'll take a, a, a brief recess, thank you.
Thank you all for coming and, yeah.
This meeting is back in session. Um, do you? We added to the agenda, uh, the summary of where the warrants. Town meeting warrants, would you like to start that before your project status updates? Why don't we start with the warrants? And just give us the brief, uh, summary run-up and so we understand what we're doing Monday night.
Yes, uh, so on Monday night, uh, the planning board has, um, five.
I'm on it.
We have five, uh, warrants before, uh, town meeting.
Five articles on the warrant.
Five articles on the warrant, there you go, thank you for town moderator. Um, the five that we have, let me just get to them. Okay, yep. So, um, Article twenty-seven is the zoning, uh, bylaw amendment required for the floodplain. Which is the one that we're doing because of the state. Uh, the zoning bylaw amendment to the floodplain overlay district, um, as well.
Which corresponds to the first one.
Yep.
Right, exactly.
Both together, yep.
Zoning bylaw amendment accessory dwelling units, which is the change with the recent law that was passed in August. Um, the next one is the zoning bylaw amendment to the update of the table of use for accessory dwelling units. It's just coincided to reflect the by, uh, the, the new law change. And then the, uh, zoning bylaw amendment to, uh, the zoning, uh, map. To show the, uh, the update on the, uh, parcel, I don't know the number.
It's the, the correct parcel, the correct parcel out on, um.
Out on Bishop Road.
It was on there too, did it?
Do we call it Bishop Road or McPherson?
It's Bishop, it's Bishop.
Okay. Cause I know the GIS shows it as different.
Board members, Jeff will let us know in advance of the meeting whether our presence will be required at the table on the dais and he'll let us know.
I imagine that we will put, they will, the finance committee will be on the dais. Um, if you're there, please, uh, you know, I can see where you sit.
We may have to get you together if you have to discuss something.
But I'm assuming that you'll speak on behalf of the board for any questions.
I would.
Well, oh, yeah, yeah, so.
Presentations will be done by Danny.
I will have the presentation.
But the questions.
If, if there's a question regarding the board, if they need, if like, you know, someone wants to know what the board's opinion was on something. We will need someone to speak and.
Yeah, I can do that. Yeah, I got that.
But the FinCon weighs in on, I think it's seventeen of the twenty-seven articles or something so.
Okay.
They'll sit on the board, they'll sit on the stage.
Beautiful.
We may have more chairs, I don't know. Go ahead.
Well, I am following what is being said as the person who wants to get rid of formality. What is on the dais?
Up on the stage.
At the stage, sorry.
I agree with you, I didn't know what it was, I just didn't. I just ignored it, okay. I just ignored it, okay.
You have to be over fifty to know what it means.
Which is why I have refused to go on the dais.
Like that song from the eighties. Dais on the dais, rock me on the dais.
We can do a little dance or.
Not working.
Not working, alright. This is why I'm board chair and not a comedian. Alright, we appreciate.
I'll let you, and once he lets me know, I will let everyone know.
Please don't say on the dais.
Project status updates.
I might, just for you. Yes, um, project status update. So air, the air substation, this is the national grid project.
Yes, a big one.
So actually, we just received an email today, um, from the, uh, 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 the engineer. They have some minor changes that they're kind of going back and forth with on, uh, with Matt right now.
We're talking about the Park Street substation, not the big sub, okay.
Yep, the, the Park Street. Bishop and Park. Um, they're going back and forth with Matt right now on some, um, some minor clarification, uh, points on the plan. Um, they did do some tree clearing along the front of, uh, Park Street, no, not Park Street, um, Bishop. And they did, they did some, yeah, they did.
They've done some clearing on the, on Park Street as well.
Um, the erosion controls, have they been installed?
Yep.
Finalized? Okay, so, and they're doing SWIP inspections, so that is currently ongoing. Um. Yeah, so that's kind of where they are right now. They're still in the early stages of this. They expect this to take two to three years, they said, of work.
Really?
Yeah.
All the equipment.
Cause of the equipment, I'm assuming. Um, but it says, that's, that's their timetable. I'm waiting for a construction schedule for, from them, um, on it, but, um, as of right now, that's kind of their timetable.
Alright, I, I have to confess, I'm taken by surprise, but there, there you go, it didn't seem like that much work, but.
This is part of a larger project. Um, this, this runs all across the state that they're doing this. The, um, so it's not only this one.
I don't think they'll be working for two years.
Yeah, I, no, 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 they won't be, I, I get that, right. And, and it seems like it'll be minimally disruptive, I mean.
Yes.
Given their location and what I've seen so far.
The most disruption would, that it will be is, uh, for conservation purposes, where the ditch and, uh. The flood compensatory storage is, that's the most, um, invasive portion.
Yep.
Which, um, you know, Heather is involved and Matt will be involved when they do the clearing out of that pipe. And cleaning out of the dirt, so that'll be, um, you know, eyes will be on that.
Forty-two Park.
Forty-two Park. Uh, Heather, can you come up and just give everyone an update on?
Oh, boy.
Where they are through conservation?
I don't need to introduce myself to you guys, you know who I am. Um, so for forty-two Park Street, due to, um, some. I, I, I'm not gonna say minor.
No, no, you don't have to say minor. I gave them an update, they already knew at the last meeting.
Okay, so it's due to site changes, so they've gone through conservation. We held a site visit in the snow, um, last week. Uh, they gave us three options, uh, the commission asked for a fourth. Um, I just received that today, we'll meet on it on Thursday. Whether or not they agree with either of those or a combination of them, I don't know. Um, they were, to say they were, uh, unhappy with the, what situation on site would be an understatement. So I don't know what the, how the commission's gonna go on, on that. Um, with if we get to a solution on Thursday, I don't know. They do have their temporary occupancy.
Good.
Um, but that was granted through Charlie, but that was only a sixty-day occupancy. So, um, and I don't know if the, the pavement res- if the solution hasn't been resolved yet, if that, that's up to the building department, so. We're still in, in talks with that, I don't know how Thursday's gonna go.
Okay. Can you send me that new plan?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it has angled parking and it looks like it was removing more of the pavement, uh, closer to the, to buffer, so.
Okay.
Head, head wall of the street.
Yeah, cause it, it's ever, you know, I gave the board an update, it was definitely increased the amount of pavement out there, so.
And what a perfect day to go do a site plan on an improperly built project during the snow.
The la- the funny thing with that site, the day we went to go look at it for the permitting process, was in December and it was raining slash snow that day. So we apparently only go to that site in the rain and snow.
So you know what's going on with the sheet runoff.
And the last site visit we had, it's snowed that day too, so apparently we only.
Thank you, Heather.
Wait, you have a question, Heather?
Come back, please.
So Heather, the, the meeting that you guys had, so what you're saying is at the end of that meeting, there was, they did not vote?
Oh, gosh, no.
Okay, so.
No, they, they.
Then we just heard that Mr. Schultz granted a temporary CO, a sixty-day CO.
The, the commission.
Done any inspection on the site, the planning board, to determine if it complies with the drawings turned into us.
Well, whoa, 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 you don't do that, you don't do that. You don't, it's, that's, that's through me. The final goes through you. I make, I, I'm the, the, I do everything between.
I know that, right. So, but we haven't done a final.
No, 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 finals won't come, finals are, I don't expect them to, to be asking for a final for.
They still do all the landscaping.
They still have quite a bit. Yeah, only for the, um, only for the, uh, salon.
And that's the, the commission voted to allow for that.
I didn't know the commission was authorized to get COs to people, but isn't that the?
No, 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 Charlie.
They just said it was temporary.
Issues. Yes, yes.
They would let it go for sixty days, basically.
Yeah, the, yeah, the commission obviously didn't, could not do any restrictions as far as the CO. In regards to the, the items that, the issues that we have on the site. The building commissioner said if the conservation commission had any issues on there, he would hold off on the, on the CO. Until those issues are resolved, the commission decided to not hold up the occupancy for the salon. Given the, given the issues that are on the site.
Correct.
They, they were, I, I did mention it and they are gonna do that, and I don't know if they have it yet on site, to mark out where the parking would be. All there, so, so as to not use that additional pavement that was put off closest to the buffer due to the, the, the slope that's out there being on a one-to-one grade. So they were supposed to do that aspect of it. Um, I'll ask that question on Thursday.
Thing whether to the end and decide it's okay. That's basically what's gonna happen. She's never going back to the original plan, which was approved.
Yeah, so, so the way it works is.
How to the end, we're basically gonna be negotiating how she fits the whole, they fit the whole thing in.
There, we're nego- so it'll be going through myself and Heather and Charlie. Will negotiate what the, um, pavement looks like at the end. But it's only, only the end, only the bottom side of the, the site, correct?
But it'll never be a grade, that's the grade that was approved.
No, they're two and a half feet low. It'll, it won't be.
Negotiating from here to the end to.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so it, if, if what they proposed to Heather and myself. Does not properly address the stormwater concern and provide the adequate parking. Then they will need to come back to the planning board. Cause that's the main concern is stormwater and the parking. Does it work, does it function as it's supposed to? If they could. Well, landscaping's not changing, that, they, they will have to abide what's on the plan. That, that, I've already told them that. If there are any modifications that may be minor, I'll look at them and determine whether or not they need to go back to the board. Um, if they do need to go back to the board, then they'll need to come back before you for a minor modific- for a modification. Depending on how substantive it is. But I, Charlie and I make that determination.
So I'm, I'm gonna, if I may, make a comment, not to start a brouhaha here. Um, I look back three years ago, it was on that property. And even though that this one has had fits and starts, I'm actually happy with the sixty-day CO. It's going to give the owner more impetus to get it done right, the way we need, get it done the way we need to have it done. But having a business there, there, it's good. Two more apartments there, it's good. Three, whatever, three more apartments there, it's good.
But.
But, and I, I'm not disagreeing with you in any way.
I'm just making a statement, it looks like a negotiation.
And the commission's concern has, has nothing to do with stormwater or parking, it's the amount of pavement that has gone over into the, to the buffer.
Yeah.
So whatever we come up with as a solution, we also have to make sure whatever the commission votes on, then gets approved by.
Yeah, so once, yeah, so once. Yeah, so once, yeah, so once Heather ha- and the board get to a point where they, they know what they want. I will also look at that and make a determination at that point, does this need to go back to the board? Uh, you know, based on the three options that I had seen, I don't think they would need to go back to the board. Uh, because they addressed the stormwater issues and it's gonna go to the right locations, the basin's not, I mean, the sub, uh. The infiltration basin or sub, the chambers, wow, I'm all over the place, the chambers are there in the right look, in the right locations. So, the grade is lower, but it shouldn't, it shouldn't have an adverse impact if properly paved.
Okay, thank you. Stratton Hill?
Stratton Hill, thank you. Uh, so, uh, last week, was it last week, Heather? Okay, thank you. Last week, we, uh, had our pre-construction meeting out there. Um, they have their erosion controls all in, um, they're going to be up there for about two to three weeks, they said. Of tree clearing, um, just in the back.
Get out of my driveway for eight hours yesterday.
Oh, really?
What?
Which, I, well, they were kind and they offered if he gave them a half an hour lead time, they would move the trucks. But I think out of everybody in my neighborhood, I don't know if they picked me on purpose, but. Uh, but they cleared out a lot of awesome, I was saying to Heather that, um, I cut you off, Danny, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go, go.
They had like ten tires in the back of their truck, they were clearing, I mean, they're, they're moving. But, um, yes, they are very much working on trees and there's a lot of trucks, big, big trucks.
I, I think the strangest thing we saw up there was a refrigerator filled with frozen food that had been, that turned moldy, remember that? Why was an entire ref- was strange, really weird. Anything else on Stratton Hill?
Um, no, so I mean, uh, other than.
So they are getting, they are doing, they're.
Yeah, they, they, they started, they were ready, um, you know, I, I wasn't sure what their timetable was going to be, but, you know, they, they were. Like, let's, let's, let's keep going, let's, let's get this moving, so, you know, I, I'm waiting on a construction schedule from them as well. Um, they're gonna be providing that, uh, but right now, they're just in the tree clearing mode. It's gonna take them three weeks probably is what I guess, to clear out what they need to clear. Um, and then they're gonna be doing pro- the project in phases for what they're gonna do. Um, like the basin down below is not gonna be done until probably the end of the project. The basin up top is probably not gonna be done till after the clearing and stuff gets done. Cuz it's probably gonna be used as a temp- temporary settling basin, so there's still a ways away. Um, there's gonna be some blasting, but there's gonna be proper notification for that, that's gonna be followed, um, we talked about all that, so. We went through all that, and they did say that they're gonna move that existing trailer that they have there. They're gonna move it up further so that it's not up front, um, and use that as, um.
It's usable?
They're gonna just use it for storage, um. Yeah, they're gonna need some storage, so it's just gonna use it, they're gonna pull it up there and use it for storage. Uh, we advised them about, you know, putting some, uh, s- uh, silt socks. And the, um, three catch basins that are out on Wright Road, just, they did have the erosion controls out like they were supposed to, but. I said just to be, you know, safe and precautionary, they're gonna put that.
When they do the silt socks, have they, does someone actually monitor them so they?
Oh, yeah, that's part of the SWIP inspections, that'll be part of the SWIP inspections.
I don't like it when they fill up and no one's.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 so SWIP inspections will, that'll be part of that, um, yeah, I'm trying to think of anything else. Go ahead.
Now that the project started, have we determined where the sewer's going?
Yeah, as it's shown on the plan, to connecting to the existing pump station, uh, to the town's pump station that's being upgraded.
Um, I sent out re- uh, edits to the minutes at Heather, uh, thank you, sent to us for March twenty-fifth.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, may I add, we have a site visit on Thursday morning.
That's right.
I just wanted to remind people. Eight AM, yeah.
Do you know if they stake it all by now?
I, I did not, I did not check, uh, but I'll ask them tomorrow.
I'm gonna ask them if they could stake out the, uh, retention inspection. In the line all the way to Grottenharbor Road to the house, not just the center line of the street, I wanna walk the whole place.
I thought they were supposed to stake something.
Yeah.
You'd ask them to stake the center line of the road.
Yeah, you asked for the center line of the road, I don't know if they'll be able to get out there in time.
They'll know when it's pretty much, where they can show us, pretty much.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I've been out there, I've since, I've done inside inspections.
I wanna walk that hole.
Yeah.
Sorry about the minutes, I wanted to.
Thank you, um, so I, I sent those revised minutes, um, do they have a motion for approval on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five?
Move to approve the meeting minutes from March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Back ended.
Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, Ken?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Kathleen? I think, can I ask that Kathleen to vote on this one? Kathleen? Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
I will abstain.
Oh, of course, cuz you weren't there, that's right, thank you, Jeff, and, uh, Sheriff, Sheriff says. Motion to adjourn? Good meeting, folks, thank you very much.